So, all right. January 5th Planning Board meeting will come to order at 7:05. Do I have a motion?
So much. Back them.
Okay, Jim?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay. Town Planner with an update on remote meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This open meeting of the Golden Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent. Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth through the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. We mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus via and directed by the Commonwealth. When public gatherings such the government orders brings through violence of the. That have all been accessible physical. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate in the. For this meeting, the Golden Planning Board is convening by video conference. We as on the town's website. And it's like how the public. Please note that this meeting has been recorded and that attendees are participating by video conference.
Okay, thank you. All right, discussion and proposed vote. 7:33 Salem Street Oak Terrace, removal of trees on House Lot.
Mr.
Number one.
If I may start to explain the situation. On December 11, 2020, the town was notified by residents that they believed that the developer had cut beyond the tree line as they understood would be left between them and the development. The town reached out to TEC, informed them of the additional tree clearing that took place abutting 729 Salem Street. TEC inspected the site and based upon the approved subdivision plan and their site visit. But approximately six trees were cut down. And there is no longer a tree buffer between 729 Salem Street and Oakland Oakland Terrace. So this is not in form of subdivision plan. And so TC had written a memo and had provided an opinion that they believe that the buffer should be restored with tree plantings or some other type of buffer. Deferred to the planning board to the type and with the buffer. And he is here to speak more about that, and I believe there are also two residents on the meeting this evening that can speak to their experience as well.
Yes.
Excuse me for a minute. Somebody's trying to get in. I don't know if you have to land.
Bob, is this one that you can that you can speak on or is this?
Yeah. No, I can speak on this. No problem. The only trees that got removed were in the septic system area. I mean. And the lot line is quite a ways back set from where the trees were moved. So. The 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 trees that were removed had to have be removed because they were went right through the septic area. So.
For which? Which house?
Do you feel that opposition as a planning board that at least they should contact us or Rebecca or notify us or ask permission before they just go ahead and do these such actions? On their own without no permission or hindsight or anything?
Not when we approve, there was approved septic already designed for it and we have approved the plan. I really think that the engineers. When he drew the tree line, he drew it in the wrong place. And that's that's what really happened and.
Well, wait a minute.
And then he then he picked back up on it. So. So.
There's there's a planning board regulation that 10 days prior to any milestones, which would include, you know, clearing an area for a septic system. Okay, has to be notified to the board in writing and the inspectors go out to their present. So did that happen?
Excuse me, can I talk, Walter?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
All right, so now what we got is Salem Street House here. I got my septic system there. Now, this person on Salem Street, I don't know if it was that one or the prior owner of that property encroached on the land for, I won't exaggerate, 35 to 40 feet. So they made a lawn out of it. They've been using this lawn. They've been mowing the lawn. They took all the nice oak trees down, whoever this person is, maybe this one or the one before that prior to that. So now they show this tree line that was never there. This is a lawn there right now, grass. And there's a shed abutting the boundary line there. So now, when I look at my septic system, I was looking for something to do. I said, geez, I'm gonna have to cut some down, some trees down that I could use. So I cut down the trees now that are inside the septic system that was approved by everybody. The tree line, there is no tree line. Somebody already cut it down. How many years ago? I don't know, probably 20 years ago. You know? So what I did is I measured off the lot line and made sure I wasn't taking any tree down. And I've been more than fair with all these people.
Steve, hang on a second. Point of order, I'm trying to find out a couple of things myself, probably like the rest of the board, a sequence of events. So. So prior to any tree cutting, 10 days prior to, you gotta let the board know. Okay, did you let the board know?
See that line there that?
Wait, 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 just just yes, no questions for a second. Just I'm trying to get this thing squared away so everybody gets gets up to speed, myself included.
We did have.
Did you notify the board?
About what, Walter?
Okay, Rebecca.
I have a 30 foot buffer line. You know, a 30 foot buffer line, right? Is this everyone?
Hang on, Steve. Steve, Rebecca, was the board notified 10 days prior?
The app, the developer did notify that the myself, the town planner, that they were looking to start work. The preconstruction meeting out at night with the construction monitoring, all other departments in this development and off the entire perimeter of the site. Identified that they were getting down. So this was done with the preconstruction meeting. Monitor was present during that time.
So was it done? Was it done 10 days prior to the cutting?
It was six months.
Okay, no, because 10 days, that doesn't matter.
It was more than 10 days.
Right, okay, so so it's 10 days prior to each event. So not, we're gonna have a full construction meeting for the whole site. Okay, so so that 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 would have stopped the surprise from everybody. The second thing is this plan wasn't designed 20 years ago.
20?
So how did this tree line get missed? If you're saying it was a lawn?
I think that the designer, Bill Holt or whoever, right? So they went around, you guys asked, can you put a 30 foot buffer zone? Actually, 20. Well, not a buffer zone. This is a tree line that is just proposed around the whole property. So I did the best I could do of leaving every tree for everybody. I mean, I like trees too, to do this. So now.
So were you saying that this plan is wrong?
Am I saying that this poorly line that he went around the whole property is wrong? Yes, it is.
All right, so Pete, are you with us?
Approximate.
Yes, I'm here. Yep, okay, I'm here.
Peter, I get your letter, I get this, and I'm just trying to trying to steer this a little bit. But but Bill Holt designed this plan not 20 years ago.
No.
So this. So this tree line should have been should have been done on this particular plan within the last couple of years and it was located properly. I'm assuming. So there's there's no lawn that he's talking about. There's a tree line. Is that correct?
That tree line, it was like an approximate tree line. There are trees along there. You can see the red line that shows where the trees actually are. And yeah.
Pete, can it? Can you just speak to that? Because it's your it's your letter.
Yep, I can speak to that. The I think the issue is where you're seeing the existing tree line from the survey that was done before construction started. The proposed tree line is being drawn directly on top of it. So when you read the plan, the expectation is that there's going to be some type of tree line between the project and the abutting property. But in fact, when you go out there, and this is what Steve and Dina are saying. They did clear to that proposed tree line and and what that means now is that there's no trees left. Because the line is drawn in the in the wrong place.
It sounds like it's a Bill Holt mistake.
Yeah, is Bill on this on the call? Is Bill on the call?
He's not.
No.
Is the licensed surveyor, I mean engineer on the call?
Bill Holt is not on the call.
Okay, Bill Holt's our surveyor, the engineer.
Neither one of them are on the call.
Okay. Somebody's got to explain this because this is not the 10th time we've seen this on these plans. It's kind of a big error. In the meantime.
Big error as in who cleared the trees? Why don't we, you know, I know you don't want to go back 20 years, but it wasn't me who cleared these trees here. He was just trying to do a plan. He's not gonna go around and mark every tree.
Yeah, it's actually it's actually required. It's it's actually required of a tree, any tree, six inches in diameter or more. So so yes, he's got to mark the trees. I'm sorry that, you know, that that's not you. You paid him to do that. But who cut these trees? Was this you, Steve?
I cut them if you want, if I could point at it. It's a little of the septic system.
Yeah.
Have to put a septic system in, stock pot exactly right there where that arrow is.
Yeah.
Whatever, one of my guys cut one tree down and then actually you want 15 to 20 feet from that septic system? Or go into a leachant bed? You must know all that. So what am I gonna do? I don't understand. What am I proposing? I'll put two trees up. The two trees I took down, I'll put them on that lot. If he wants them, you know.
We didn't pick them down, is the point.
Just jump in here real quick, if you guys don't mind. This is this is Tom. I actually own 729. So. Steve is relatively correct with this. I think my my property includes some lawn that I've been cutting for quite a long time. And I think it probably added some physical confusion beyond just that plan to the whole situation. And so he's totally correct that that the that the lawn that I cut is likely not even my lawn. And that's probably been the case for so many years. So I think one of the things, Steve, if we can come to an agreement on and if everyone's okay with it. Is it possible just to plant more trees basically on the lawn that I've been cutting? Does that make the whole thing easier?
More trees right along that lot line is fine with me, you know?
I mean.
Well, it's it's the board, the board has the authority and it's in the decision to plant a buffer zone. But we gotta figure out where to put it at this point. Because it sounds like somebody popped a septic system in an area that shouldn't have been there. Or.
Balls the whole time.
No. The septic, wow, you know, septic system goes where?
It's approved, I know.
No, no, I don't disagree.
Put in there. But don't say that.
Wait a minute. Somebody should have known that the septic system was going here. So so we have, it sounds like we have an engineer issue, but I think the solution is is correct.
Yes.
I mean. In a general sense.
He'd work it out so they can, you know, Tom is, it was correct. He's he's stepping up and saying that, yes, he agreed that it's probably mowing a pot of Steve's property. That's fine. Let's and then agree to plant a few trees. But Steve need still needs a little more to do some grading by that septic and everything else.
Yeah.
So so I think.
That's what I mean.
I can speak a little bit too. I think the biggest thing for the for the neighbors is 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 keeping some amount of that buffer and keeping some amount of the wildlife the way it was. I think we're all having a hard time with the with the sense that there's been a lot of lane clearing, which is fine. That's part of the plan. But I think if 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 there can be some amount of basically, you know, some buffer that's left remaining, and if it's just a matter of we plant more trees, I think everyone will be happy with that. And obviously, I've been cutting grass. It's not my grass. So, you know, it's totally fine if, you know, obviously, you guys own the land and whatever you want to do with the land, as long as it conforms to everyone's liking. I mean, I'm fine if we just replant trees. Just plant trees in the grass that I've been cutting.
Just go in and make quickly. I guess where my argument comes from is that I felt was blindsided. I understand the necessity. I understand there is a lesion field that need to get done, and this is all part of the tree was enhanced by the engineer says, we want to put the septic here. Oops, this tree, in order for us to do the septic, we have to remove the trees. I understand that. The only thing I feel is that I wish that DeLulu and whoever company and every company we deal with the future, instead of just go ahead, take it in priority, just cut the trees. Wait till tonight's meeting, propose it to us and say, look at it, this is what I have to do. Does that make sense? Because other than that, I feel like.
Jim, I think there's a there's a preconstruction meeting that went on. And there's a limited cut and there was a, they knew what was going on. So I've got, I've got a problem with how many trees to put in and. What is it? Planting board jumping in and dictating for this. Wally, I think you should listen to this.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, on this particular project. There's no, you can just go plant trees because there's no limited cut later on in life. There's no green belt kind of area on this. So you can't stop somebody from buying that house and then taking it down.
Exactly.
Does that, do I make myself? It's not like set a place where you had a tree buffer and it's part of the planning board. I think this is. You know, if the septic system needed to go in and the trees needed to come down, that was that was part of the plan. So shame on somebody that missed that. And if Tom has extended his yard out, I think it's kind of between Tom and the DeHulos where they need to plant the buffer. But you can't tell the DeHulos, I don't think at this point, where to plant trees because I don't think we have any jurisdiction later on.
I would never do that. I'm not asking that. All I'm saying to you is, I just feel like at times, like I said, we were blindsided because all I heard was trees were cut down. I didn't know the reasoning. I had no idea why. All I had heard, trees were cut down. And if I'm not mistaken, we've had incidents in the past on other developments where. Where contractors took liberties just to take trees down because they felt they needed to at the necessity without notifying us. And that's all I'm saying.
But do we, there is a, there is, this is before your time, I think, on the board. There is a preconstruction meeting that took place.
Okay.
So you could say that was noticed before.
I was at the preconstruction meeting with Rebecca and the fire department, the DeHulos.
Bill Holt must have been there, so you know, I mean.
Electric light department, all those.
Yeah, but wait a minute, guys, that's that's completely different. Okay, the planning board regulations state that before every single milestone, not a general construction meeting, that's wonderful. But for every single thing, where the binders go in, the catch basins go in, the sump drains go in, the trees come down, everything, everything requires. There's 10 days notification to the board, hey, next step is we're putting the binder down. Next step is we're putting in the catch bases, next step, etc. And that is all spelled out in the regulation. So that's one heads up. But we have a, we have another problem here, and I think Bill touched on it. Okay, we have an ill conceived plan. If a septic system's supposed to go in that area, then there never should have been a tree buffer zone tagged in that area. So and and that happens sometimes. Sometimes you gotta move it around. What happens if it doesn't perk exactly right there? I get it.
It shows a buffer zone, there could be anything bought there.
Well, well, wait a minute. So the planning board, because this has happened, this has been going on.
I don't know.
Forever, when you go into construction, things move around. It's just the way it works. So so in the planning board, in the planning board regulations.
I threw the woods and I showed you, knew what they said?
Steve, Steve, hang on.
And restrictions, so why are we here? And I said, thank you, but I will try to help all the neighbors around growing.
Steve.
Always have.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to explain you what the reg says and why we put it in.
There's rules and there's way to present the rules and you're just going off. I don't understand.
Steve.
The whole planning board. I walked out there, I walked through there. You weren't there where you wanted. If you were, you would have heard everybody and said, Steve, you you can cut every tree here. It doesn't have any restriction. I go sniffing.
Hey, I was trying to explain what the reg said and why it's put in because I wrote it. Okay, during the construction, stuff is gonna move in around. And I've been in construction over 45 years, so I know this. So what the planning board did to help everybody out was at the end of the day, once this construction was completed. And if there was supposed to be a tree buffer zone, which we do try to keep all around the perimeter for the neighbors. Then we go back in afterwards and we designate, you put a couple of trees here, a couple of trees there. And we've done it on every single subdivision for the last almost 30 years. And so that's that's in the reg that's in the decision. So it's an easy fix. But you have an engineering problem which frustrates the board with a surveyor doing engineering plans. And the engineer of record not coming in and he made a mistake.
The best I can do, you know what I mean? I just mean, I think it's ridiculous because there's no tree cutting. Yeah, it's just, it's just, I can't, I believe. So I said, I said, Tom here, he's the only one that really mattered. Tom is the abutter. And I said, I put a few trees up for him and I don't even have to put up trees.
Steve, you do, first of all. But number, what I'm trying to say is your engineer has been consistent with this board for 30 years of making mistakes. And this is another one. And and also, so I would like a meeting, if we can get it to the board and Rebecca, I would like Bill Holt to come in, but I want his engineer coming in.
Walter, this has been going on three years.
We didn't know where to put this.
Yes, it has. It's been going on for three years and you're trying to slow me down about me cutting a tree inside a septic system.
Hey, Steve, your engineer put.
Road was wrong. I said, Steve, you're taking matters into your own hands a couple of times here.
Where?
I mean, we're not here because, you know, we're here because the project has failed in a couple of times.
I went through the other person's property and everybody made a big deal of it. I asked that person, can I take a skid loader through your property just because I didn't want to connect the two properties, which is in Walter's regulations? So I said, can I go through there just to drive this through so I can't take this giant truck down this road? And then all of a sudden, they said, oh, you're gonna ruin the road. I'm not gonna ruin the road. I thought it would be much easier for everybody. It's not all about me this whole, I've been here building longer than anybody.
Yeah, but you haven't been doing subdivisions. You have not been doing subdivisions and every subdivision that you have with this engineer is a problem for the board and the town.
How about sunset? Sunset, how about sunset?
Sunset too. You put a fire hydrant in the wrong spot.
They might break, you know?
All right, so so how about a motion to visit the tree issue based upon TEC's design plan after completion? They gotta put a septic in and take care of that. And in a motion is sent to bring in the engineer, the engineer of record and the surveyor and have these two explain this mistake again to the board.
Can I, can I just say one thing? And Peter, can you tell me if one of them?
Help them.
Tell me what I'm saying is correct. The tree line that we're talking about, where we say Bill didn't put it in the right place, it's really a small area where there were no trees. There are trees still there. And then there was a small area, which happens to be the backside of where the septic system is going, that didn't have any trees. It has lawn, it goes up to Tom's lawn. And that's where we cut these two trees down in the septic.
It was six trees.
That now made it look like, you know, to to Tom, I guess, that we were cutting down his buffer, when actually there was just an air, one area that didn't have any trees.
Six trees.
Yeah, yeah, Dana, the Candy's Candy's right. I think we counted more than just a couple. But I think at the end of the day, like like I said initially, it the the biggest thing for us as neighbors is is just making sure that that buffer still somewhat exists in some way. And I realize that the land has been the land the way it is for probably the last 25, 30 years. I've been cutting that grass. I realize there's even that little random porch that somebody built out there that that I've been kind of cutting grass around. The the plan is probably a little bit flawed in in regards to that and 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 really where I thought my my property line was, obviously. But as long as we can take care of it as as, you know, replanting trees or whatever it might look like on the grass that I've been cutting, then I think everybody would be happy.
I know, that's how I feel the same way, Tom. What would you like? Two or three trees and we'll call it a day. I just need really.
Steve, you may be putting in a 50 foot tree line, so don't put a number on it because the board has.
He's not putting a 50 foot tree line, Wally. And we're gonna settle it right now so we can keep going.
You can't.
Yes, we can. Yes, we can.
No, no, Bob, you can't. We've done this on every subdivision. You gotta wait till it's complete and see where the neighbors want it and where it makes sense. And typically, it's a double stack tree line, six wood trees, white pines, hemlocks, something like that. And it goes in. So you can't set a number till it's done. They gotta finish what they're doing with the septic to see what it looks like. And that's why we put that in the decision.
Decision doesn't say I can't cut these trees down.
No, it obviously is a mistake on the plan.
Well, I did Homestead, didn't I? And what does it say?
And Homestead had a tree line problem as well.
It's on everybody's deed, do not cut 30 feet. So if you want to rewrite your regulations, do it. But at 30 feet, it says over at Homestead. It doesn't say anything here, Walter. So why are you pushing me? I don't understand what I've done to you.
Steve, Steve, it's in your decision and the plan, the plan that we approved showed a tree buffer zone. I understand the septic's got to go in and that's why we put that other regulation in that said, if you gotta move the stuff around to make it thick, houses, septic, etc. It happens. So to fix that, we we go in and at the end of the construction, where we know everything is stabilized, the board has the authority to go in to put a tree buffer zone in. And it sounds like it's only in this one area. Okay, but I can't tell you how many trees yet or anything, and no one can until we go out there and take a look at it. But you have a mistake on this plan. You you have a licensed engineer and surveyor that went through on this plan and made a mistake. And I want to know why. Because this is not the first mistake on this subdivision or others. And him and the other one did have a tree issue as well. So.
Which one, Walter?
I don't know what happened over there, but this is an easy fix. This is a very easy fix. And that's why we put that in the regulation that the planning board has the authority after construction to go back in and put the tree buffer zone in.
Wally, I think the two neighbors that have concerns are sitting right here with us.
Right.
I don't know, one was saying six trees. Tom was saying a couple of trees. I mean, can we just iron something out now and if that's all right with Rebecca?
Yes.
That's all right with Pete and that's.
My only issue, I only have one issue. His words. What difference does it make? I asked the neighbor if I could just take down these streets so I can put a truck in. Who is he to ask a neighbor without going through us? And that's all I'm saying. Who is he just to make these arbitrary decisions? That's all I'm getting at. And again, it's arrogance in my, in my opinion.
Not arrogant.
It is, it is, because you still gotta notify.
Wally, it's not arrogant. Okay, you can just move on, keep on going.
All the money. 24 years I've known you. And you think about arrogant, you know? I mean, I know Jim doesn't know me at all. Bob knows me. I just mean, what have I done to this town that I I?
Basically is, you've got someone that needs to follow the regulation and you're not.
You know?
It it's been several times the regulation. Some of this isn't your fault, though. It's your engineers who should have known better, like a giant benchmark that was off. Okay, so but you've got to follow the regulation. A subdivision is a completely different animal than an A and R, single family dwelling.
Again, Walter, get on the subdivision, I'm trying.
I'm sorry, but you you applied for this and you got it. You've got to follow the regs and there's a problem. So.
And we're gonna fix it right now with the other two owners, right now.
Okay, so so put it, leave it to the end of the construction and the board goes out and visits. Maybe it's two trees, maybe it's 10 trees.
Well, easy was gonna be, Walter, when I took the other two lots, I lost a lot off of Washington Street. You said, Steve, it's gonna be so easy. You're gonna get it through in six months.
You're still gonna follow the reg, Steve.
I know, but I am. So there's grass there.
Look, we're going in circles.
Possibly, so I set up two trees and if Tom wants six trees, we'll build six trees.
Point of order. Motion on the floor to revisit the issue for the tree buffer zone post-construction.
I mean, can I just ask, where does it say there's going to be a tree buffer zone? And is it?
It's on your plan.
No, 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 it's a proposed tree line and the word buffer. The word buffer is to me a different, a different meaning.
That's in your decision and it's in every decision.
But it's not. I mean, I.
Yeah, it is.
Rebecca, if you could just point that out to me or send that to me tomorrow, I'd really appreciate it.
All right, can we just move the the motion and move this on? Because we got other stuff to do and it's an easy fix. But we gotta get your engineer in here and surveyor, both of them. This subdivision is so small, never should have had all these errors and it does. And I want some answers.
There's not even that many errors. We could have had it done and the people could have been living in the house.
An eight foot benchmark is a serious error. So don't give me that. All right, so let's get these guys in here and explain this. But in the meantime, the buffer goes, this happens all the time and it's an easy fix. And that's why it's in the regulation to go back in. Matthew Drive is another one that we had to do years ago. Matthew Drive is another one that we had to do years ago. You never know when you're gonna have to move a septic system or a well or something else around, and we allowed for that, although it was supposed to be notified ten days prior, which we were not, but you fix it at the end, and it's very simple.
So this is.
But we, we've got other issues here besides the.
All right, you know what, I like to throw an, a motion out there, and let's see if this is all right. I like to amend the motion, okay, that Wally's put forth. Six trees along the property line between seven twenty-nine Salem and seven twenty-seven Salem. And if that's amendable with Candace and Tom, because they're the two homeowners that I think have the grievance. You know, I think we can get this done now, and is that acceptable?
And is that acceptable for Tom and the other person?
Six would be good, Candy, what do you think?
Sure.
Yeah, but is it six mature trees?
I second the motion then.
Well, we'll, we'll do six buffering trees as long as.
What's wrong?
The species can be determined, we're not gonna put in like two-foot trees, I, I don't think the.
How about, how about a minimum?
Do that.
How about a minimum of six, and because you, again, you really don't know, you say six, and they're six footers. You know, these are bigger than six-foot trees.
Just like we do on the subdivisions.
Shade trees are different, shade trees are different, these are buffer trees.
They weren't, I, I think, you know, again, to Tom and Candace, I, they're gonna be buffer trees, they're not gonna be oaks. They're probably gonna be some kind of an abiviti, I don't know, you know, I don't wanna overstep my bounds or a hemlock or something.
Something like that. Yep.
Can, can we, can we, can I leave it like this? Can, can we go with six, and if it, if it looks completely wrong, and we need to go with a couple more, maybe, maybe eight or ten, is, is that completely unreasonable?
No, that's not, that's exactly what the reg says. But you gotta wait till the construction's down, so you can see the holes and where to put them.
Right, 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 that's what I don't think we know.
But if we're gonna motion, if we're gonna set forth a motion, I mean, I, you know, if we're gonna set forth a motion tonight, it almost has to be Xed in stone, unless the Hulu's are willing to do something out of what we, out of what we come out with tonight.
How about a minimum of six to be determined at the end to follow the reg, it's, it's so simple, because you don't really know.
Motion, okay, how about this? How about we motion up to ten trees and no less than six, if we.
I was just gonna make that motion, I was just gonna put that in there.
All right, that's acceptable, ten sounds good.
I would, I would second that motion.
Awesome, yeah, that better work for me.
That'll work.
Did you call a vote?
Yes. I mean, anybody? Um.
All right.
All right, Brad.
Jim?
I have no problem, all I wish is he just give us, or me, um, maybe again, I'm wrong, the common courtesy, just let us know what's going on, that's all I ask.
No, I agree, Jim, I mean, that's, I agree.
And you know. Take it upon yourself, that's all I'm saying.
I'll just stand.
Okay, so that one carried?
Carried.
Okay, so that's good, so the next step for this is, is what, that?
Seven thirty-three Salem Street, Oakland Terrace, Ola Homes, to vote on a tripart agreement.
Did Pete look at that?
Uh, T E C is the one who prepared the bond estimate and the amount of a hundred and fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. The developer is looking for the board to vote to accept the agreement, and then also to sign the Form G one and Form G two, so that they may be recorded, the lots released from complement and a building permit may be issued.
Okay, did Pete look at this tripart? I saw the numbers, but Pete, did you look at the tripart agreement itself?
Uh, no, I just prepared the estimate.
Okay, this is our form, right, B H? Rebecca?
That's the form that you used on Homestead, that's the form that you used on all of the developments with the.
Right, yeah, so this is our form, right, okay. Uh, I'll fly that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Jim?
Yeah.
Brad?
Yep.
Wally? Okay. Uh, third is Benjamin Street Extended to Ola Homes, bond reduction.
So this is for the, um, the lot on the other side of the terrace one, uh, T E C has been monitoring the site, they've been out to the site, they reviewed the approved plan and have determined that from the initial bond of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, that it may be reduced sixty-five thousand dollars, and the board hold a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The developer needs a board, the board to vote to reduce the bond and also sign the form G.
Okay, Pete, and is that, is that a good number, one, two, five, you said?
Yeah, and actually, um, I want to bring up, Steve, um, sent me an email and brought up a good point, so in my estimate, I'm including, uh, twenty thousand dollars for four Coltech chambers, um, if the board is not familiar, the Coltech chambers are the underground, um, plastic chambers that, um, you know, catches the roof runoff from the new houses. And Steve's point was, those really are not part of the, uh, subdivision drainage system. Those are more linked to the development of the houses.
So he's asking. Where do they go once they leave the house?
Uh, it, meaning like, you know, in order to build the road, those Coltech chambers are not constructed as part of the, the subdivision roadway.
What about the drainage?
They're put in, they're put in with the, with the house itself and hooked up to the roof of the house once it's built.
Right, but my, my question is, where do they go once they leave the house? I know what they are, but where are they draining to?
Oh, they, they, um, they infiltrate into the ground, and then if they overflow during like really large storm events, like larger than a ten-year event, they just spill over land, um, down to the bottom of the, um, subdivision.
So they don't connect it to the drain.
No, they're, they're not connected to the drainage system in any way. Completely separate. So.
Not a stormwater management, though?
It is in their stormwater report, which is why I had calc, had used it in the bond estimate. Um, but I, I also understand Steve's point, which is, if that house doesn't get built, you know, that. Those chambers don't need to be built until the house is put in, essentially.
Yeah, but we can still, if it's part of the subdivision for the stormwater management, then it should stay, I understand the point. Uh, wha- what do you suggest on that, Pete? Because if, if it is part of the stormwater management system, and I understand it, if it's not built yet, then it doesn't get active, but.
Yeah, I mean, I had included it in the estimate, but I, um, I guess I wanted to discuss it with the board, because I'm not sure what's been done in the past for that type of situation. I could see it going either way, um, whether, you know, where Steve's point is that, you know, if the house doesn't get built, those chambers don't need to be in, in, in place, because there's nothing hooked up to it except for the roof of the house.
Yeah, but if, from the speed we're seeing houses built, it looks like it's going to be anyway. It's, it's not gonna be an empty lot for five years, is it?
You never know, so, I mean, I, I would put it, just on the, the plan, the house plan, the that the chambers have to be in because of the stormwater management, and not have it tied in with the road right now.
Or, or you could also keep the bond in place, and it gets transferred with the sale of the property.
That's an idea, I like that one. So. Motion on that.
I agree with that one. Oh, now, say, so this bond, you'll have to keep paying for this bond for ten years. Say, so same with the septic system, I have a design for a septic system. I mean, the septic system's gonna have to be complete before I build this house, or not complete, but before it occupied. And same with these chambers, they're gonna be, have to be completed before I build the house. But I just mean, is, what if it takes ten years? I, I don't know if I'll ever build a house here, to tell you the truth.
I mean, the way things are moving, I, I, I would, nobody knows the future.
I don't even gonna, I don't plan on building a house here, how's that, you know? I really don't, you know?
Is there an approved house lot there?
There's an approved house lot, and it may be up for sale and whatever, I might not, never build on that house lot.
All right, well, let's go with, let's go with the idea of the board, uh, stick with the number and then reduce it down as it goes. Um, I'll float that motion.
Yeah, but what does that mean?
What does that mean, what about the twenty thousand that's in, that's in there?
Yeah, that stays, and then it goes with the house lot, like, uh, like it was proposed.
Yeah, so it goes with the house lot, or it can come off as a road bond, right?
Exactly.
I mean, for the reduction as it goes?
Yeah, I mean, that has nothing to do with the road bond.
Stormwater management, so we have a motion.
It will be done when the house is built.
Call for vote.
Well, it's a performance guarantee, you know, as part of the construction package, I mean, that's, that's how I'm looking at it. I do this too, I mean, that's, that's what's been done to me before.
Yeah, can we move the motion?
Well, what if, what if we sold it, what if we sold the lot, and now somebody else is gonna build a house, what happens to that?
The bond gets transferred to the, to the sale of property. That portion of the bond.
The bond, right.
Gets transferred. Let's say you're done, and you only have, I don't know, ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars left on that property, because the infiltrator is in it. You sell it, that, that gets, that gets moved over. And on an insurance bond, what is that? I don't know, what's that, uh, two hundred dollars a year?
I'm just saying, so now even with the storm, the Coltech, I call infiltration system for the gutters, there's no way it's gonna cost me twenty grand, it's gonna cost me five thousand dollars.
Well, it's gonna cost you five, but if we have to go in and fix it.
But the town has to go in and fix it, and they're not gonna get your rate.
The town can come on that property and fix those.
Um, we, we get a motion on the floor, can we second and move it?
I second that.
Peter, so do you agree that these Coltech chambers have something to do with the drainage of the road?
No, it's part of the stormwater management, I mean, that's.
Out of the house, when you build a house, it's for your gutters.
It's not. Water management, it's for the roof runoff.
Well, roof runoff is constituted under stormwater management, I mean, we, I do this too, I, I just.
Right, Bob, is it, is Benjamin Street one that you can vote on?
No.
All right, so, so we have a motion on the floor, and did someone second that?
Actually, I have another question.
Okay, so call for vote. Um, call in favor, signify by P and I.
I have a question also on this, other than that, if I can discuss that.
We, we've gotta move the motion, so.
Hold on, do, Wally, do they have a stormwater management permit in place?
Rebecca's got the answer to that one.
Correct.
Yes, that's part of their approved definitive subdivision plan, so they have both a stormwater and land improvement permit, as well as a definitive subdivision plan pulled into that one decision.
Then it falls under the stormwater.
Stormwater management, right, okay, so we have a motion, and second it, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, okay, the vote carries, three.
You're not, you're not allowing me to ask another question?
Well, you can ask a question after the vote, we had a motion, we seconded it, we moved the vote. So what's your question, now that that is passed?
There's two items on here, one of them is the three percent mobilization that you have on here, that I don't understand why that would be on there either. That, that twenty-nine thirty-three.
We did take that off of, uh, a couple of them already. They don't charge mobilization anymore. We've had that discussion.
What was that, Pete, what was that in there for?
I mean, the purpose of mobilization fee is, is, uh, you know, the standard percent of the total contract that a contractor charges to move their equipment out there to do the work.
And.
And, and so.
So, so it's part of, it's part of the total package, it went in there, and we.
Yeah, but, well, Wally, another thing is, uh, we took it off Al's, uh, bond reduction, so maybe if they wanted to take it off his, there's no reason why they couldn't.
Well, wait a minute, so, we, we just reduced this down to one twenty-five, I believe, so, so that's done. If they want to submit another one to the board in two weeks on whatever this three percent is, and this other stuff is, we're going, that's fine, but.
Well, you wouldn't let her, you wouldn't speak until you, you know, made your motion and had a vote on it, that's what she was trying to do.
Because we had a motion on the floor with a first and a second.
She wanted to try it.
Bob, remember, you have to stay out of this because you can't, on these, some of these things, you can't butt in, you can't ask questions, you gotta stay clear. Technically, you're supposed to leave the room.
That you didn't let me speak, and so that was one issue. Another issue is, the total of all these numbers that Peter has here is a hundred and twenty thousand two hundred and sixty-seven, yet they want the bond for a hundred and twenty-five, what about the four thousand seven hundred and thirty-three? I just don't understand how that, where that came from either. I feel as if.
I think that's the three percent, I think that's the three percent right there.
The three percent, so.
Percent is two thousand nine hundred and thirty-three. Okay, and that's a different figure, if you're looking at text paper here that he gave us.
We round up, Dina.
Round it up by four thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Okay, um, we're done with that issue, okay, so what's up next on this? Is that it for, for Benjamin Street?
Excuse me.
Is it, is that it for Benjamin Street?
I think somebody's trying to speak, Wally.
Go ahead.
Obviously, it doesn't matter if I am.
Excuse me, this is Nancy Sweetser, and I'm sorry to bother you, I, I just have a question, uh, pertaining, uh, they're saying they're not gonna develop the lot possibly. I have granted them an easement plan, and, um, the water is overrunning the road, it's not even hitting the catch basins. Uh, what is, what, if they're not gonna develop the land, I'm just gonna watch my, what, watch my land get washed away?
No, Nancy, what I'm saying, I might sell the lot, that somebody actually wants to buy that lot, and not sure if they want me to be the builder. And they said, Steve, can I buy that lot from you? And, uh, you know, they want a very expensive house there, Nancy, so they'll be doing fine, but they say, can I choose my own builder? I choose not to use you, and I said, yes, you can choose your own builder, but let me give you an estimate on the house also, you know, so that's all, and if these people don't buy the lot, I'll build the house. But I just mean, I just have a person that wants to buy the lot, and what I'm going through these days, I just, you know, I just, it's just had enough, basically, you know?
Yeah, so he's, he's trying to the subdivision.
But Nancy, I always take.
But I'm just, I'm just curious.
So I just.
Okay.
You may not build the house, but the house will be built.
It's gonna be built, and it's gonna be built right away, I just, you know, have my chances, Nancy.
Yeah, and Nancy, I just wanna speak to the, um, the fact that you said the water is not making its way into the catch basin right now.
Correct.
Yeah, so that, that's, um.
On the plan, there's nothing that says that there's gonna be, uh, berm's directing the water into that, those catch basins. It's not only, uh, involving my land, it's also involving the town's land at the last catch basin at the end of the T.
Yeah, so I think the, the issue is that we're in an interim state of construction, the road's not done yet, uh, so the, the final paving is not done, and, and the berm on the edge of the road, the asphalt berm that will direct the water into the basin is, is not completed yet. So once that's in, uh, this, that should fix the problem.
Because the water is undermining the road down there.
I know, I've been trying to. It looks like frost eaves. It really looks like frost eaves up there, I've been, I was up there today, took a look.
Frost eaves, there's, the wa, the road underneath the pavement is washed away, I don't think that's a frost eave.
Oh, Nancy, and I'm gonna be putting some more pack in there, anywhere that happened, and make sure that the snow plows don't take away the silt sock at all, which may have happened, and this is probably why this happened, but I'll be down there to put the silt sock tomorrow, and also pack the gravel back where the hole is, like I always have, and I always did for you.
Right, honey, I just.
You can call me.
I just.
Do it, we can call the town. But this place.
I just wanted to make it clear that.
Here at Goldstone, wherever, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's just. At the corner of the, of the road, where it turns into the T, the road has been undermined by the water rushing down the road.
Well, I think.
And this is what I'm afraid of, is if.
That's the sock, I saw the sock was moved a little bit.
And I'll replace that tomorrow.
And then, you know, what, what, Steve, what's that, like an eighteen percent grade coming up the hill?
Yeah.
A little rush down that hill, and I mean, that's, it's hard to control, it's hard to blame on a subdivision that's below that.
Over there tomorrow morning for a thing, and put the sock in, and then pack that, uh, wherever it washed out for you. If you have any other complaints or problems, I can fix those for you tomorrow too, and I'll knock on your door.
What size stone are you sending up there, Steve? Because if it's got that kind of a grade, it's gonna wash.
Rip rap in there, and then I'll put some different sized stones to make sure it doesn't leak.
Well, it's not, it's not Steve, it's, it's the street above, what's.
No, 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 I don't disagree, I, I, I completely understand, it, it's just that, yeah, I think rip rap will stabilize it, and then some.
It's not, I don't even think it's rip rap, so Steve's into binder, so it's that, I think it's, I don't know if it's Pond Street or Benjamin, whatever it is, it, it's got like an eighteen percent grade that's already been there and existing, right? Right? You know, yeah, flying down that hill. Yeah, but it's not like, I don't think they've, they have not created that problem.
No, I don't just, I I'm not saying they did. And I think Steve's got a good fix for that. What he just said, so.
And he's already, I think he's done a driveway over with uh, lint pack.
Yep.
So I mean, that I was, it looked pretty stable and I, you know, I I see what's what she's talking about and he's gonna take care of it tomorrow.
And I'll help you out, Wally, Nancy, and I'll knock on your door.
Okay, so we'll. To uh, Grammy Way.
Yep.
Okay, Grammy Way, George. Asl time, uh, road acceptance, information and discussion.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had added this to the agenda because we're having a little bit of an issue right now. Um, the board approved the subdivision decision on February 2nd, 2016. Um, and when the decision was reported, there was a letter included from the fire chief stating that there were no further comments. Concerning the design of the subdivision, specifically the cistern, but there uh, were concerns about the maintenance. And inspections of the cistern. Uh, so there was no other follow-up correspondence shared and there's nothing else documented pertaining to that matter. So when the developer started to go through the street acceptance procedure and started submitting all of this documentation. I kinda started to ask a couple of questions and there were really no answers. So then I reached back out to the current fire chief and he too shared the same exact concerns as a former chief. Um, saying that they do not have the resources and or funds to maintain and inspect the cistern and do not want the liability of doing so. So therefore, we're kind of in a little bit of a situation where we're not sure exactly what arrangement should be made. Um, I know that I offered. The homeowners association to have them uh, be responsible for maintenance and inspections. Um, the legal counter for the developer had stated that that might not be an option. Um, we talked about additional signage, but since a couple of you were on the board when this was approved, I wanted to bring it before you to have a informal discussion prior to having. Drop a form of board for a formal rep. And as to whether or not we wanted to accept the roadway um, and put that before town.
So what was the date of the, I saw the fire chief's letter, but I didn't check the date. Well, was that in 2016?
January 2016.
All right, so that was the concern then.
January 18.
Okay, so so that letter. Qualifies under the subdivision and would have been added to the uh, to the decision. As it as it required in section three, four, five. Uh, there's another section two that goes that where everybody puts in their input. So. There's a little bit that we've done. Before where you put a maintenance bond up and I think Bobby used to do this for like two years. And you put up a maintenance bond and that takes care of that and then that drops out. Um.
But I I guess I don't understand what you mean in terms of a bond because the subdivision has already been built. It's our, everybody's been living in it and and living in it for quite some time now. So I I don't understand how we can request a bond for the developer. To maintain this without a a plan in place as to how long that maintenance would occur, the inspections of such. I I mean, it it it's really a a a service to the residents that live on the roadway and also to the fire department to have to pick up the slack with their resources. Um, in order to make sure that it's working properly because if the fire out in the site, they go down to connect and nobody's inspected, then they might not be wanted.
So so that letter is part of the subdivision decision. And so therefore, uh, a bond by the developer. Uh, should have been in place. Uh, to do those inspections, not the town of Grove.
Yeah. Well, we've also been.
Part of the decision.
So we also have some conversation about homeowners association they have over there. Can't the homeowner association take you take uh, possession of that system?
No, no, the homeowners association can't be taking part of the infrastructure. That's like taking care of the electric too. Okay, going through in there once it's accepted by the town. The homeowners association is individual lots and grass and fences.
But that's a life and safety, isn't that life and safety for the homeowners of that?
It it certainly is, but the big nut of that, who installed it? And that letter is part of the subdivisions with their concerns back in 2016 that raised a flag on that. So i- is there any amount of bond money left over on the subdivision?
No, I'm pretty sure that you released it.
All of it?
It's probably maybe. Now there's gonna be maybe a thousand dollars or less. That. To Peter Williams to finish his review and all of the other uh, review that's necessary.
So, so we may have to do it, get the current chief in. How many inspections does he need on that in order to accept it?
He doesn't want to.
He doesn't want. He doesn't want to accept it.
He doesn't want to maintain. Doesn't want to put that into his budget. He doesn't want to add that to his list of things to do. He said.
So shouldn't that be in the, well, testing hydrant is. It it probably is, but I understand what he's talking about. But doesn't that come under? Uh, not exactly chapter 90, but doesn't that come under the road acceptance budget? Who accepts all the infrastructure under the street? Isn't that, isn't that the town of Grove and once it's accepted in the in the way?
But that still doesn't make sense because if you have electric poles underneath or electric wires underneath, that's municipal light. If you have water, that's the sewer department. If you have. The pavement, that's gonna be the highway superintendent and the chapter 90 funding can be flexible, but it's not necessarily gonna be used to inspect and maintain a cistern. Water for essentially a dry hydrant that was approved as part of a subdivision to fight fires.
So who's? Hmm, I I see where this is going, but I don't have the answer at the moment. Who who maintains the hydrants now?
So if we own the hydrant, we maintain.
Right, so we're gonna.
Water department.
We're gonna own it when this road is accepted in the fee of transfer.
You do not need to accept the roadway.
It, wait a minute, say that again?
Just because a roadway has been submitted for acceptance does not mean that it is an accepted roadway.
No, I know it has to go through the town meeting, but but uh, a subdivision of this size will get accepted eventually, but if it has things to do. Then then it won't be submitted or backed up by the board. But once the, once the road is submitted, who maintains the hydrants?
And town water department, they flush the hydrants.
All right, the water department.
But the.
Once the fees accepted in the town.
They're not gonna maintain and inspect a a giant tank of water that has nothing to do with their infrastructure. A hydrant is actually connected to their water. System, their infrastructure in the ground. This is a literal huge tank that's sitting underground. That they have nothing to do with the water department and they have a desire not to maintain it or take care of it because it doesn't have anything to do with that.
That's why it falls, I I think it falls under the homeowners association.
It, yeah.
The homeowners, it's the homeowners association that it's there for. Why can't it fall into the homeowners association?
But the homeowners, the homeowners weren't there at all. When this subdivision was approved. No, no, I don't think so.
So is the homeowner's. Is the HOA already?
Probably should have picked up the cost.
No, I, I see where Rebecca's going with this, but but they do do inspections and there used to be. A fee, so they would go and do the inspections and they. And they were charged for it, but this is for fire protection of life and safety, which comes under the umbrella of the town of Grove.
Who did the safe, who did the cistern up at Cedar Dale that they don't have anymore? Who inspected that, maintained that? I think Cedar Dale did, right?
I'm not really sure. I don't know about Cedar Dale.
So.
What they done. I know the one that we have down here at the end of Rocky Woods, that fire pond.
That's a fire pond, that's not a cistern.
That that was, that was the only fire protection that was in place for 20 years. So so what that does is that the fire department did go in, they flooded and they checked it themselves, but I think there was a fee. Uh, somehow it was signed, but I know the homeowners didn't pick it up.
We have hydrants now in this subdivision.
What, yeah, now there is, but there wasn't then.
So if the homeowners association wasn't recorded, can we still put it into that? That would be my question.
And that's a, that's a legal question for the homeowners, but uh, but there should have been a maintenance bond. That would have carried it for a couple of years for inspections to make sure that it's operational. We do the same thing with the drainage. Uh, in the area. So just a maintenance bond for a couple of years, a couple inspections, and then it gets signed off and then the bond gets returned.
Yeah, but who inspects it and who maintains it for 40 years?
And you also.
That would be, once it's transferred to town.
You can't just inspect it and be qualified. You actually have to have certifications in order to actually.
Right, right. So that would be the fire department. But think of the liability for a second.
Certifications to inspect it, which is what they said in their letter. They do not have the funds, they do not have the resources, they do not have the certifications.
So why should you put them on the hook?
Who on the hook?
The fire department.
I want to put the homeowners association on the hook.
No, you can't. If a house burns to the ground out there, guess who's gonna get nailed? The town of Grove. So that that's wrong. And and if the fire department doesn't have the qualifications and they have to call in and outside testing. Yeah, I understand that completely, but this should, that still comes under the maintenance bond. And that's, I mean, has the the developer even tested that system yet?
Nobody knows.
All right, well, that then that's on the hook for them and so therefore the town would reject the uh, reject it at the moment.
We we at least needed some pa- some paperwork saying stating that the thing has been tested and it has.
It's in working order of some sort, right?
Right, exactly.
So then I'll ask, I'll ask that as a follow-up question and I think that we can all think about this a little bit more and we can bring it up again. But in relation to that, the other issue is that the fire department would like us to make a revision to our subdivision rules and regulations to eliminate the use of dry hydrants. In this type of infrastructure since they do not have the resources in order to maintain them moving forward.
Yeah.
Is there any dry hydrants in this town? I don't think so, is there?
There was, there was one other one that was proposed. And you know what? With the old chief, I think he had to search to test those because they were test, they tested the fire pond down here. That was the only fire protection that we have. Uh, and that was tested.
He owned environmental.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And so they used to do all the testing uh, going forth. So but I I agree with that. And that's easy, easy to modify in the subdivision rules and regs. If you need a motion for that, I'll fly it.
Hopefully, we'll never need another cistern and it'll just be hydrants.
Yeah, well, that's, that's exactly what we've been trying to do. Uh, you you know, going forward and and you remember that subdivision didn't go in easy either. You know, that that had some issues and and everything too when it during the design, so. Um. But anyway, so um, I I'm so I'll support that regulation. I don't know if you want to do it to the reg change. Maybe we should call them in and get a a little more detail before we just uh. Do a blanket, but certainly entertain it. And uh, put it on the list for discussion.
I think we should talk to uh, town council about the HOA as well. Maybe right now.
Plus, I think Rebecca should uh, ask them to do. Or find out if they do have test reports or are they gonna get it tested and and have some reports for us so we can see them.
Definitely. Love the.
Yeah, no one's gonna, no one's gonna accept that red road without it being tested. And you're right, Bob, a set of reports on when and when the last time was and certainly before road acceptance. And it's gotta do an operational test. The fire department's gotta get out there and do their thing and see if it works.
But we also have to figure out going down the road for many years to come. You know, because it is, it is a lot.
Or what are we gonna do next time?
Yeah, you can't.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. I agree. And uh, it typically, yeah, I don't know whose budget that comes out of. Um. Someone's gonna make a decision on that above our pay grade. Um, onto that, so, okay. Was there anything else with that or is that?
That's all on that matter. Thank you.
Okay, and then the minutes?
Yep, um. Minutes approved to December 1st, 2020 minute. Do I have a motion?
So motion.
Second. Aye. Uh. Okay. Uh, Brad?
Yes, aye.
Yeah, yeah, Wally.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Okay. And then the next thing is um. Motion adjourned.
I have one other item if I may.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Um, just. The next me- meeting is um, uh, supposed to be on uh, Tuesday, the 19th. That would be the third Tuesday of the month. Uh, there is a conflict with the board of selection meeting. Technically. We would just meet in a different room and we are meeting virtually, so it's not an issue, but I actually have a matter before the board of selection, so I will not be able to attend. So the board um, can either have one of you, you members could volunteer and host the meeting in my absence. Uh, we could move it to the following week or we have nothing on the agenda and we could move it to the first meeting in February.
I say we.
I think.
I think I'm, I think I'm gonna be at that meeting as well.
Yeah, I know. I'm gonna be outside of the state on the 19th myself, so.
So let's uh, move it to uh, February.
So we'll move it to the first meeting in February, which will be February 2nd.
Yes.
Done.
Okay, and also the last item is that the town clerk recently just sent me over and uh, the chairman just uh, sent. For to me and the chairman over um, a change to the open meeting law. Usually we do it every fiscal year, uh, but she's going to be changing it to every calendar year. So when you all um, have an opportunity to come in and sign those forms for Oakland Terrace and Benjamin. I'll also have the meeting law form that you'll need to sign. It's just the form acknowledging that you've read the open meeting line, you understand its contents. And then also he had sent me uh, a updated list on the ethics certification. So it looks like you are all current, however, Wally doesn't have anything on file for you, so we should get that over. Rather than leaving.
Okay, yeah, I get that. So I'll get that over. Okay.
And that's all.
All right.
I'm sorry about that.
Nope, anything else?
Lost that.
Okay, so. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Okay, we will adjourn uh, at 8:10. So, everybody, have a good night.
Night.
Thanks, everyone.
Yep, bye.
Nice.